Before we get seated and get started, and pray to the sound of God that our sound system stays with us for the rest of the night. It could be the beginning of a whole new era. Keith will be on.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everybody to the June 29th special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Kent County Police Protection and Community Services District. Time now is about six o'clock. My name is Len Welsh, I'm the board president. And at this time I'll take roll call. Director Corvina.
Here.
Director Gillette.
They are here.
Director Toomes.
Here.
And Director Sheris Wine.
Here.
Okay, we have a full board. And that's not to say we may have to leave something in the meeting. Just have some to do, okay? Okay, so we begin public comments, and I want to, before we comment, I just want to know one thing. You will see there, the phrase, the sentence speakers are reminded of board meeting conduct policy 5030.41. Whereby each member of the public may be allotted five minutes and a maximum of twenty minutes in each subject matter. We're reminded to do that, okay? We're not going to be called to do it tonight. I would ask for people to try to keep their comments brief. I am getting a lot of complaints at the meetings going on and on and on, and people leave because they feel like there's too much time to spend on comments. And I just want to let you know, I will be proposing at the next meeting that we change our policy, that we amend it, so that every commenter gets a maximum of three minutes to comment. There is no time limit on the subject matter, but you know, one person gets to comment three minutes on each subject matter, and we receive comments until we're done. That's the way it's typically done at a city announcement meeting and things like that. There's no reason why we shouldn't do it the same way. To the life of me, I can't understand what was going on in the mind of a merchant, but we can have a policy that says five minutes apiece, but a maximum of twenty minutes on the subject matter. This doesn't make sense. So I will ask for getting to the point. It'd be nice if people could stick to three minutes, but the main thing is to get the message out there. It's mostly our business. If you want to make one other announcement before you go, I'm going to ask to switch the order of the event items. So that we do item three, let's name the number item three, so we do that first, and then take the other three minutes. So with that, the first public commenter is up at the podium, and identify yourself and go for it.
I'll try not to take three minutes crying. I'm Mrs. Bill Stanton, AKA Donna Stanton.
I can't hear you.
I'm Donna Stanton. Mrs. Bill Stanton passed away. We had a funeral last Monday. And I was appalled by, there's two things, and it relates to budget. The budget has to do with the numbers of the police budget and that kind of thing. And so I want to bring these things up. We've had many, many calls, and I did call the manager about this, Mr. Hart, but I wanted to bring it up now, because the second item I'm going to bring up has me furious. First item is the fact that I don't see a reason for the police to come and peruse my house when the fire department and paramedics have taken good care every time my husband was picked up. And the last time was a couple weeks ago, at 3:30 in the morning, when the police officer, he was being very polite, but at 3:30 in the morning, tells me how lovely my house is, and the pictures, and that kind of thing. Feels like my house is being cased, and I resent it. So I don't want to be paying for that at all. The policeman might come to check and make sure everything's okay, but they don't need to come in and peruse the house and stay there as long as the firemen and the paramedics, they're doing their job. That's all we needed. The second is even more, has me more upset. That is that on Monday, unfortunately, one of my neighbors collapsed, and we needed a fire department in the middle of the funeral. And I found out that Sergeant Barrow attended the funeral, not attended, came to this event as part of the, what they consider the policy, or you all consider policy, when it was unnecessary. And then I heard the two policemen were standing in the back of the crowd, kind of, as I would say, kibitzing with each other, which means they were disturbing people more to the back of the crowd. We were very fortunate, though it was very loud, and we had a lot of people, but they didn't have to be disturbed by police officers, not only including one that I feel horrified that he had the nerve to be at my husband's funeral for any reason, much less standing in the back of the crowd and talking, and not being in uniform, being in a hoodie, I've heard he didn't have the badge. But this person shouldn't even be on the force, much less having been to my husband's funeral. So I want to make a point of that, because we're paying for it, and I don't want to pay that extra money.
My name is Ron Lawson, I'm from Kensington. And I have a few remarks to make, one of them goes to the board. I think we owe a little.
Sergeant, do you speak up a little?
You gotta get closer to the mic.
I think we need an apology from Mr. Toomes. Last week, last meeting, the half-hour pissing contest while you dragged your feet was unnecessary. And I think you should apologize to the city of Kensington and your board for that. Now, the other person maybe should have pardoned himself also, but you've been around too long, and you know too much, and you shouldn't have gotten into that pissing contest, and that was wrong.
Why?
That's it. You should apologize to the board, and apologize to Kensington, to that pissing contest, and killing that half hour of our time. We got the meeting very, very late. The next comment has to do with Chief of Police, or the general manager, I believe it is. What is going to be our policy now with regards to overtime? Two policemen, what are we here now? Who probably shouldn't have been in my house either, Officer Barrows, are getting too much overtime, getting much too much overtime. You're going to two people, mostly overtime, and we don't have the money. So I don't see how we can continue to afford, to allow this much overtime to be granted to so few number of people. My complaints about Sergeant Barrow and Sergeant Turner, you'll get on your desk, you'll see me related, for their harassment, and going through my house, and being told to leave, and not leaving. Under the color of badges, not good enough.
Ninety-five, eight miles.
Also, we'd like to discuss about the police cars.
Ninety-five, they're by the interstate.
A hundred thousand miles? I've forgotten, over a hundred thousand miles of every vehicle I've owned. So I'm not even going to ask how they came up with a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand miles. But it seems like if all the time I'm driving, even just to go to Richmond to process citations against me, it's still too much driving, it seems. And I don't know why we need new cars after a thousand miles. For stylish reasons? Why? I think I'll hold off for other reasons until we're ready.
I'm Gene Dur, and I've lived in Kensington since 1967.
Thank you, James. Jim, how's it? Sorry, James.
Sorry, you just had to get close to the mic.
Yeah, I used to project the whole room without a microphone at all.
We do want to hear you, so please.
My name is Gene Dur, I've lived in Kensington since 1967. Proposition G matter. It seems to me that when--
But can I ask you to save it for when that comes up on the agenda, please?
That's what it says on the agenda.
Yeah, but right now, this is public comment related to items not on the agenda. We'll have it checked when that comes up.
Very well.
Thank you, sorry. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hi, I'm still at Tibbs near guard. I have just a quick comment that there's been several incidents where the posted agenda was not clear. I think it was like May 14, people couldn't figure out what the agenda was. And I heard at this meeting, I wasn't here, that our legal counsel said that was okay. But that doesn't really sound right if you're supposed to make a clear agenda. And again, there was confusion, I think, in the June 1st meeting with, you know, what was Harmon's meeting, who was on the agenda. So I want to reiterate the importance of having clear agendas, which I understand you're calling the--
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I don't think you can mind the board here.
Could you?
You have to be--
I'm just a little--
Mayri Benson here. This is a general comment about the agenda. We were led to believe tonight's meeting would be to approve a preliminary budget, and then there were two additional items on the agenda. One is to alter the, add a CPI to the proposition G funds. And at the last meeting, it was said that that was going to be taken up at the next, and it sounded like regular meeting, I think. That's when it should be taken up, when there's more notice for the community, when more people could be here at six o'clock. Some people have said, "I don't get home from work until then." I don't think it's fair to the community to be having those two items, one and two, when this meeting is advertised to be just the preliminary budget. Those two items could wait a week and a half.
All right, if there are no more general public comments, then we're on. Yeah?
Just briefly, I think after a period of what I regard to have been uncontrolled spending-- Can you not do it?
That's better.
After a period of what I regard to have been uncontrolled spending, instead of putting another tax on us, you all ought to be concentrating on cutting costs, not more taxes. And I know it's only five dollars, the profit will be a partial.
Could you save the comment for when the majority comes up, please? No, we're not there yet. I suspect there would be a lot of people saying similar things. All right, so we're going to take item three first. That is, the board's review and consideration approval of fiscal year 2015-16 preliminary budget. Something we have to do in order to be able to afford the end of the month. And General Manager Hart, can you brief the board?
Absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I will talk loud, as loud as I need to, so everybody-- So, good evening, everyone. Not on county, but today is my sixteenth day on the job, and I'm glad to be here. Glad to meet a lot of you that are here. I did just bring some business cards, if some of you would like to grab business cards, that I have made appointments with anybody that wants to come see me. And I'll go to your house as well, as I have done for the last two weeks to talk to anybody, just in general nature. But tonight on item number three, I'm presenting the preliminary budget for review and consideration. Preliminary budget submitted solely for purposes of the statute or requirements. As the dean, Mr. Ford, just still waiting for key cost analysis figures to actually reflect this year's expenses. The general manager will submit the proposed fiscal year 15-16 budget at the board's regular meeting on July 9th, and conduct the secondary meeting and the final adoption of the budget at its regular August meeting of the board on August 13th. Those are planned dates, hopefully you can keep to those dates. But right now, today, those are planned, provided the board accepts as stated. The total district expenses for 15-16 are $2,811, a decrease from 2014-15 budget. Total revenues are reported so far to 2015-16 to $2,899. The deficit is about $16,000, it's forecasted. However, anticipated revenues from annual cost trends and other revenue possibilities have yet to be determined. Therefore, the proposed final budget figures will change. The preliminary budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee on June 22, 2015, which went to eight to one, to recommend to the board as an adoption of the as presented. So I present the budget, and Director, President, I would like to proceed with regard to the specific $30,000 elevation, or down one to one, with your preferences.
Would it be good to go through the general summary first, and then we can come back and ask people if they want to go with a specific line, if that makes sense?
I need one correction. I think the vote needs to be settled on, because I believe that there were only eight members there.
We will correct that again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first mistake I've made through these. Hopefully it's the last. All right, so for the police salaries and benefits, the $30,000 elevation subtotal was $2,460,000. That includes salaries, and benefits include uniform allowances, safety equipment, medical insurances, Medicare, Social Security, workers' comp, costs essentially. For police expenses, we have $331,000. $268,000 is projected, and that includes expendable supplies, range, crossing the guard, vehicle operations, communication, radio maintenance, any work from training to recruiting, reserve officers, utilities, office supplies, housekeeping applications. For related salaries and benefits for the park recreation, we have $31,147,000, excludes some consults, some admin work. Reparation expenses are $89,000, $940,000, which includes some of the community center expenses, janitorial supplies, a little bit of building supplies, and parking and recreation miscellaneous expenses. District expenses, total $312,000. That includes computers, contracts, legal, consultant work, accounting, insurance, police building leases, although it's not out specifically, but county expenditures. For capital outlay, we have $78,000. That includes police building improvements, patrol cars, accessories, weapons, stationary equipment, office furniture, computer equipment. That total is $78,000, for a grand total of $28,9500. That's $30,000 foot elevation. Any questions?
I, yes.
Can I come up with an error, please?
Sorry.
That's all right. Just a correction. But if you look at the note, the letter, General Manager Hart indicates the total revenues are $2,889,500. Actually, that's the total expenditures, as he just quoted. I think it was a transcription error, probably, when it was written. You go back to item three?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a transcription error, I did.
Right.
And the same is true with the guy for the expenses.
Thank you. So--
I guess I have to say that's the second mistake I've made in the last-- Thank you for that correction. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ciara Wood. I have a question regarding the proposed budget. In discussions, were any line items reduced? Were the amounts, were the amounts of any line items reduced so that the community would be paying less?
Reduced over line items less from the line's budget?
No, in this budget, please, from what was initially proposed.
It is initially proposed.
Do you need further guidance, if you need?
I'm not sure. Ciara, could you please come up, so we can be clear on the questions?
Carl informs me that there was no change in the numbers. Why was, was there discussion of changing and reducing these numbers in any line items?
If we're talking, are we talking about from the Finance Committee?
Probably.
No, this figure here, this budget here, preliminary budget, it's the same budget that was presented to the Finance Committee. Any change won't take effect until we do the proposed budget on July 29th.
Also, there is room for the board to consider reducing line items to that time?
Yes, absolutely. And I, I should have made it clear to everybody, this is a truly a preliminary budget. Finance Committee looked at it, raised a number of important issues for us to consider, and we will be, in that process, will consider those issues, and will present the final budget, propose the final budget approval in August meeting. That's the plan.
Thank you very much. Will there be another finance committee meeting before July 29th?
I don't anticipate one at this time.
Just even on Carl's orders. Jim Watt had a meeting with the chief, and they were nice enough to invite me. So we spent a couple of hours last Friday talking about a number of budget issues. And I think what we sort of did, we sort of have an understanding as to where we are, where we are not. One thing that I have decided to give up on is the overtime. The chief has told me that he wanted us to look to see how he addresses overtime. And I have decided that I was going to keep my mouth shut on overtime for a while to see what happens. The chief also said that he would look at our automobiles. It turns out that we have seven. And before he comes and asks the board to buy another automobile, he's going to look at to see what we need, so I'm going to be quiet on that, too. He has also said that he would come up with a policy on weapons. I know we don't know exactly what we are going to do if we buy seven, eight, or nine weapons. Are the officers still permitted to carry the second weapon? And are we then getting away from what we want to do, which have one type of ammunition? So before, he said before he was going to buy weapons, he was going to think about it, set up a policy, bringing it to the board. He also promised me that he was going to look at the communication item, which I think $36,000 in the budget, no, I forgot what it is, I'm sorry.
For which item?
Whatever the communication item for the office, I guess $60,000 or $70,000. He was going to get competitive bids, and he was going to bring it to the board. So I was sort of, I felt good about the meeting, and I felt that not only did Watt make his point, I made my point, and the chief made this, and I'm going to be quiet on those things. But I still absolutely object to $150,000 in legal fees. Before I came here, I took a look. For the fiscal year ending in 6/12, we spent $92,000. For the fiscal year ending 6/13, we spent more than $181,000 on legal fees. For 6/14, we spent $205,000 on legal fees. Up to the billing in May, we have spent $193,000, and I figure we probably have another $20,000 come in between what we spent in June and what hasn't been built yet. So we're talking about $691,454. My assumption is that half of that was wasted, was spent foolishly, or whatever you want to call it. I could see where we could have spent $350,000 on this building, and we would have something for our money. From what I see, we don't have anything for our money on this one. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's your proposal for the, what would you do with the legal fees?
With the budget?
The budget, not the legal fees.
I think if we're going to have a lot for him, I know, $60,000 a year, if I remember the number right. And then I would assume that once we get organized-- Okay, I'm sorry. Once we get organized, the chief has been here for a while and so on, we are not going to have multiple attorneys at the meeting. And I understand that most of our issues are sort of flat behind us. So what I would then do is say, what are we going to need, another $20,000, $25,000, or whatever? And so we'd be at 90 or 95. Now, I don't see anything wrong with setting a budget and going over the budget if you have a good reason or explanation for it. What I don't like is that you set a budget and people say, "Well, it's in a budget, let's spend it." Because there always, a year's a long time, there are always incidents when something happens, and you said, "Well, it was unusual," and so on. That answers your question.
So would you set it at 60, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's 60 plus whatever else you think we're going to spend. Because if we want to spend 12 months at $5,000, isn't that what it is? Six, it's all, you know. I mean, I love to see a 70, 75,000, but that may not be realistic. So anyway, I'm asking you to change that number of whatever, don't pass the budget with that--
Carl?
$150,000. I actually feel good that I voted against the budget, and I was the only one on the Finance Committee who voted against the budget.
I just want, would like to acknowledge, Carl, that we communicated after that, and I agree with you.
Yes.
I think you have a good point.
You did not agree with my number, but I think you agreed that--
Well, no, actually--
You agreed with my number.
What I said, and I think this is the way we should go about it, is that we should try to accurately, not pull a figure out of the air, but accurately predict what our bill's going to be, and use that projection with a little bit of stretch as a disciplinary tool. So if we don't meet it, then we have to explain it. And so it's just the reverse of like permission to spend. It's like we're going to shoot for this goal. That injects discipline into the budgetary process. If we don't meet it, we explain it. But at least that way, we're trying to use the budget as a tool for discipline. I think that's been your point all along, and I wanted to let you know I got it.
Okay, thanks. I apologize, I probably went beyond the five minutes, but I had to help my station.
Well, that's important. So you have a very soft voice, so please speak closely.
Yeah, I'll be right up here. Is this good?
Yeah.
Okay. Dear President Welsh and the Kensington Police Protection and Community Services District Board, as you perhaps know, I worked as an accountant and bookkeeper in the late 70s, early 80s for nonprofit organizations and small businesses. Besides the usual tasks and responsibilities, I spent a lot of time helping large numbers of clients make wise budget decisions based on adequate detailed financial statements. I studied the information presented to the June 23 Finance Committee meeting. My clients had every reason to keep expenses down using good budgeting tools, which does not seem to be the case here. Although we, the public, and for that matter, the Finance Committee, definitely still have lots to learn about the district practices and processes regarding the budget and finances, here are my preliminary findings in areas needing clarification. One, presentation of information. There was a lot of paper and insufficient information. I was shocked that not only the citizens coming to the meeting had the adequate information to make good budget decisions, even the Finance Committee didn't seem to have complete financial statements, including itemized income and expense statements. At the very least, all expenses should be itemized, so we can see what they are. The last fiscal year actual income and expenses should be presented, so as to compare with the proposed full year budget. The most recent last 12-month actual income and expense statement and balance sheet, i.e. June 1st, May 31st, should have been available as well. Two, internal and external financial controls. This whole area is extremely important and not yet addressed. Externally, we need full transparency. There should be sharp-- There should be sharp limits on number of credit cards, preferably just one, and all credit card statements should be posted online every month. Full financial statements, and this is itemized income and expense statements and balance sheet should be posted every quarter. The bookkeeper, accountants, or treasurer who fill out checks should not be the check signers or authorizers. Three, content and use of the budget. There were a lot of underspent line item expenses, i.e. having, in the presented budget, as well as line items with moving cost overruns. There were a number of line item expenses that were mystifyingly, mystifying in their inexplicable enormity. One example would be twenty-five hundred dollars for periodicals. That is why we need the actual expenses itemized, so we can see what they are. The Marin County Sheriff's Department stopped giving out home medical retirement benefits over twenty years ago. As Maryland stolen has shown, pretty much all government entities have done the same except Kansas City for the obvious reason that it is unaffordable. Four, specific recommendations. Limit line item overspending by requiring the treasurer check writer to get permission from the board to go over budget by more than a small percent. And that's what, what Rick was talking about, variances at, at the Finance Committee meeting. Make a longitudinal study, say, over the last five years. Of each underspent line item, you see what is going on, shrink the budget on those line items. One was, like, pointed out, one, I think it was gardening or maintenance of the park, and we weren't really spending that much. Save the taxpayers' money by eliminating unnecessary expenses, like expenses like incentive pay, sharpen the overtime pay, make an immediate hiring increase, immediately change medical benefits, acceptable grandfathered to be like other public entities where people seek to provide government Medicare. Pay attention to and act on the twenty-twelve grand jury recommendations for better controls over the K P P. Work for cutting taxes, not adding to them. And finally, I wanted to thank the Finance Committee for its hard work and the financial expertise, in particular, some citizens like Jim Watt and Rick A. I would encourage more turnover on the Finance Committee to make use of, of local talents such as Rick A. And thank you for listening.
My name's Rob Berman. And speaking on this point, I have another point, and another agenda item on this point for the K P O A. In general, these are very general comments. One is that we're concerned about controlling, and we do see that the expenditure, and we want to get more information, and just make quick, can help. And two, part of that is, if a budget is ever recommended that is, that involves deficit spending, or that gets close to that, should we develop in the, in the district a, a policy about how to approve that, which is more stringent than the normal approval process? And then, of course, there are some, some questions that we open, assuming the board will, as the board independently, will pay special attention to, such as the cars, which you've heard about, and overtime, which you've heard about. And then the second point, a second major, might consider a minor point, is that in the report to the lobby, I think we're, we're not getting adequate cash flow reporting. The previous speaker, and he did a, a great job, a good suggestion, but I would add that in addition to the reports that she is urging us to, to receive, that, in our opinion, the most important of all, and we've discussed this once as well in one of your meetings, where you generally gave us some time, cash is the only thing that ultimately counts. It doesn't matter what the balance sheet says. Cash flow per period means we'll have enough cash in the future to pay your bills, or not. So, so we need better cash flow reporting.
I think it's, I'm sorry, I have two questions. I just want to be clear.
You're sorry?
I just want to be clear, are you saying that there will not be another Finance Committee meeting to bias to the adoption?
On that, don't plan for it.
Well, and I'm curious why?
Well, I think we got the advice we needed from that meeting. I, I suppose we could have another one, but I don't.
Well, given that there were a lot of questions, I think that absolutely everything, those questions, were aired and answered. Just my recommendation. Sort of a follow-up question to Carl, regarding the legal fees. I'm curious, how much money was spent, that's pretty much spent on the grid? And specifically, how did the community benefit from that?
I'll, I'll have to research those numbers to, to know.
And then also, we need to, I, I'm curious. I, I can appreciate when we put money in the building and we benefit, when we take care of the park, we benefit. How did we benefit from the money spent on the grid?
Well, from my point of view, we were sued because there was a political loss on the part of the litigants, and they weren't happy with their political loss, so they went to the courts. My experience in government is that you allow people to force you to change the policy through litigation, and you, and you settle on that basis, and you see more litigation. So I, you know.
Wouldn't it be beneficial, community, if you just voted again on another item?
I don't know that that would, I don't know that that would have stopped the litigation.
I don't know how it would have harmed, if it was seventy hundreds of dollars.
I, I wasn't here on the board at that time, okay? I wasn't.
I, I, I.
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that that would necessarily have stopped the suit from being done.
We'll never know that, but.
No.
I just think that something where, you know, from.
I do know that three board members were personally sued. They appealed to the court of appeal, the court of appeal shot them down, and it also said the underlying action was completely legitimate.
You know what, mistakes were made on both sides. My question is very simple. Money was expended by the board, and I want to know what the benefit was to our community, given that it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. I asked this question once to Mr. Tooms, and he said, we can't let these people tell us what to do. We elected you, we expect you to respond.
My name's Anthony Harris. I was amazed by the figure presented by Mr. Krueger concerning legal costs. This thing, my opinion, for a long time, and a lot of these cases are being fought. The public has no idea what's going on, the reasons for them, the outcomes, or the cost. This is all a part of lack of transparency on the part of the board majority. And having a meeting at this time without having sufficient time to have these things posted is just another example. And what ends up happening is we have, as in the prior case, a chief who caused a lot of litigation. We had Reno Gate. We had Alco Gate. We have freeway-style lights on our road. We have zero enforcement policy, or whatever that might be, I have no idea. So we need to improve the transparency, and we can start, the majority can start, by keeping the new members of the board informed of what's happening in a timely manner, not after the fact. Thank you.
Leonard, I want to correct something. One of the commissioners, I contend, that if the board had taken the vote again and done it properly, there would have been no suit fight. If there had not been a total ignoring of the requests by a member of the board regarding all of those issues, a stonewall, a stiff arm, and ignoring. If that hadn't happened, then there would have been no suit fight.
All right, well, I don't think we need to get into that now, the issue is the budget.
No, no, Leonard, you raised the, Leonard, you raised the issue.
No, I entered someone else who raised the issue.
You raised the issue about, you said that you thought there was no way we were going to sue. That's just not true.
I'm going to say, you had a rather strong defense. The whole point of the grid was that this board followed policy and procedures. It didn't happen, and that's what we objected to. It was not a political thing, because it was all filed before the results of the election. But I will get back to the budget. And I was going to break about thirty thousand dollar police car, but I will accept what Carl and Jim, Mr. Hart, have talked about, and we'll have a further evaluation of it. But there was zero for the parks in that budget. Can you explain why?
The best, the best thing I can say is that it's mostly a roll of a budget from what I've got. This is preliminary budget, and I'm looking for other opportunities.
Okay, okay, I understand, Mr. Hart, you are really not in a good position to evaluate it. This budget is pretty much what Carmen presented to whoever it was in the Givory or March. Nothing for the parks.
A correction. General Manager Chief, please, Carmen did not present any budget. This is the first budget that's been prepared. And just out of curiosity, what number are you suggesting is missing from the budget? What do you think?
It's the same set of line items that there's thirty thousand dollars for the police car for expenses. There's zero on all the park items.
So you're telling that capital outlay?
No, well, yes, uh, well. Since it's hard to determine, for me to determine capital outlay versus other outlays, there's some ongoing expenses, like cleaning the rest of the building. But the cap, I guess capital outlay, because we know we're going to have to have some major expenses with renovation, who already approved the consultant, so that's just the beginning step. It seems to me, it's just terrible that we don't feel, we just need to start putting in the pot for, for the parks.
So maybe do you have a mountain, think we ought to include?
Part of it's a little unclear in how much is allocated. There's a two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand number, there's some other numbers, but, fifty thousand dollars. I mean, if you could do thirty, thirty thousand for a police car, move it over to the parks, that's a start, but.
And is there a particular thing that you want to spend that honey on? You're just saying we should gather their.
No, we, there's been a, a, well, a human pride, that may be an exaggeration, but a serious concern about the safety of this building we're in, and that something needs to be done immediately, as soon as possible, if not last year. And we know it's going to cost money, and it was a little hard to sort out exactly how much is allocated, but I think in the past meetings you all said, we don't count all that much for doing some sort of major renovations in here. Maybe you said three hundred thousand. You know, and you could argue, I don't think you can build a house for three hundred thousand these days. Seems to me we thought that we need to be putting something serious into the parks.
Gloria Morrison, District President. I think sometimes when people speak of the park, there's a little bit of confusion. Most of us know that what we pay for the park, the Lotian and Landscape District, that is in fact for the property that was purchased from the school district, as the tennis courts and that general area. The this building, the amphitheater, the this oval, that's all, always has come out of just the general district revenue. In the past, people would say, well, maybe ten percent, maybe seven percent was for this general area. So talking about all of these other things, there is a sort of a confusion about the taxes paid and what that tax is supposed to be taking care of.
And Mrs. Morrison, do you mean, we call this old park.
This is the old area, that's right.
And we call that area a new park. And if you look at Code six seventy-two, if you want to follow along, or if you choose to see, how the, uh, operations management of the park is sort of, go ahead.
Wait, but, yeah, that's exactly, and if we do see that money is received, or revenue is received for the park, but technically, that revenue is for the upkeep of the new, what I call newly personal. People have been around as long as I have, that's the new area, which may not be new to anyone else. One other thing, and it's only about transparency, there's nothing wrong with the page, estimated available cash. But I would really like to see a, a column added before the first, uh, date, cash to date. The column be a consolidation of expenditures in each category up to that date. The reason being is that when you're looking at last year's number, and you see, for instance, on many of these items, it was zero, everything was wiped out. And if this year's number starts with something, I think it raises a certain amount of questions. We just need a, a general recap of what happened during the fiscal year, and I don't think we have to do, I don't mind it, just knowing why we got from zero to, say, a negative three hundred thousand, or something like that. That, but I, I don't think that there's anything wrong, I don't think there's any intention to mislead. And I really want to say, there's lots of tanks on the agenda. I was here at the famous meeting, okay, the famous meeting. And there was no question at all in my mind that when the board went into closed session, that the chief's job evaluation and salary would be discussed. And I'm, I'm still puzzled at the amount of anger at what happened. That was what the agenda said. I can't imagine why people keep saying, who knew? You did, if you were here, and if you read that agenda. I'll be honest, I left around ten o'clock that night because I was tired, but I felt in my mind I knew exactly what was going to happen. Nothing seemed to be kidding or sinister. Thank you.
One quick point on, on the line items. It might be useful to create a philosophy, techniques that, that explain to each of the line items, just for everyone's information, that may be useful. We got to this building. There is a structural analysis that apparently is going to be undertaken to look at what is needed, if anything's needed, to bring it up to code. And apparently, it is a little one, a couple hundred thousand that have been set aside for the building. But the primary function of this district is public safety and police protection and the people. This building is not critical to that function. It strikes me that if you're going to argue to set aside several hundred thousand dollars for this building, then you should be going out to the community and ask them if they want to pay for it in another way. Major L was defeated, unfortunately. But I think the only way to really improve this building to a level that maybe everybody agrees with, it's got to be paid more outside of these funds. You've got to recognize that two of the funding sources are restricted for police services in this nation. The two measures cannot be used for anything else but police services pursuant to Prop two eighty. So all you have left is the general revenue is to come from property taxes and a few other items. So there really is a lot of slush in the revenue. So there really is a lot of slush in the revenue coming in that can go to this building for significant improvements. So I'll just reiterate, if you're going to spend more than 200,000 on this building, then it should not be spent using revenues for other districts. This building is not critical to the function or the mission of this district. It's great to have, the public, um, the residents may like to have it, but it should be paid for outside of the revenues of, of, uh, this district. Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. I just want to respond back. The one issue though is the safety of the building. I think we all understand that.
That's correct.
The building needs, at a minimum, to be reinforced, you know, to the highest standard possible against an earthquake, and we need to deal with that issue.
Well, I agree with that, but if that is going to cost you several hundred thousand dollars, then you have to make a decision based on priorities as to whether this building is still necessary. I mean, yes, it's wonderful to have, it has many functions as far as daycare, it's like voice helps, et cetera, but it is not critical to the function of your district. The district's main function is protection. It's a police protection district. And the revenue stream is basically for that by law.
I'll save my comments for a jury.
Okay, I want to say something, what I was going to say. This district was a community services district. It only got the, the, the two words, police protection, were added while I was on the board between 1998 and 2006. So this has fundamentally been a community services district, and police was one of the services that was provided to the community. The reason that police protection was, that those two words were added to the name of this board was because we were being passed over, we were being passed over in Sacramento for police-related funding because they did not understand that our community services district did police work. So that was really important, that was really important. I'm not sure that we need to say it's a police protection district. That sounds a little bit like we're protecting the police, and I'd rather that we go back to thinking of this being a community services district. Now, on to the top items, what do you talk about? A couple of years ago, I came to the board wearing my Yellow Fire State Council hat, and this board made a financial pledge of $15,000. I doubt that it has appeared in any budget. The point of the $15,000 was to be part of a grant proposal, which Yellow Fire State Council not only made, it became part of the filling the gaps proposal, for which we have been awarded money. I hate to tell you, things filter down from the Fed or the state very slowly, but finally the money is coming in. So for your budgeted $15,000 of work that you do in the park, whether it be on trees, this can be old park, new park, doesn't matter, as far as removal of, we can talk about that another time, but it can be managed. This can be managed by $15,000. And we can talk about those projects, but I think it's important, when you think about your budget, that is there somewhere. Because if you guys don't come up with that $15,000, then the other $15,000 will just go somewhere else. It will not come to you without honoring that. So I just want you to kind of have that down so that you can think about it. Thank you.
May I correct some of the history? I'd like to, I'd like to bring the Kensington Past and Present Book to the July meeting to make sure that the board is aware of what the actual history is with respect to the order of the names of this district. My recollection is that it started as a police, uh, department, then expanded to become a services district when it acquired responsibilities for recreation. And then before I served on the board, so in the early 90s, I believe this one was renamed the Kensington Police Protection Union Services District. So if the board would indulge, I'd like to bring the book to its meeting and refer to that. Thank you.
Please do, thank you.
Can anyone not hear me? I'm Anisiri Ortiz, Kensington resident for 17 years. Thank you all for your time and commitment to our community. Just a quick comment I wanted to make because I would be very angry at myself if I didn't. When I donated my car, it had 342,000 miles on it. I have to trust that this board, all of this board, is going to spend my money, spend our money wisely, and I just ask that you please do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Watt. I missed my chance for a public comment here, but I would like to get something in here because I think it's very important. And that is, if you take a look at your Calpers obligations for this coming year, you'll see that it's divided into two components. One is flat amount that you have to pay, and the other is a percentage payroll. Flat amount is, as I recall, $204,000. You'll also see in the Calpers statement, and I forget which page that's on, that it says that you have the opportunity, if you wish, to pay that as a lump sum. And if you pay it as a lump sum, and I think you have to pay it in June or maybe July, uh, you will, instead of paying 204, you'll pay 198,000. And since I think you have a lot of money right now sitting in CDs, I think you'd be well advised to probably make a decision here at your meeting on July 9th, assuming that that works, and maybe counsel or Adam can check this out and see if, if in fact you will qualify for that $6,000 statement. That's a separate item. And if you're ready, I'm happy to go through some of my line items. I'm not going through all of them because, did you tell me that you were originally going to stay at the 30,000 foot level?
No, I, I think it's fine to go through my items.
Okay. I will definitely, because I do want to reiterate what Carl said. It was very nice of the chief. He spent two hours with us. I think we went through a lot, well, here, we went through a lot of the items in the budget that concern me, and I don't want to bring those out here, it just takes much too long, it took us two hours. So we don't want to subject anybody to that sort of punishment. And what I'm hearing, I believe, is that at the July 9th meeting, we will see a more refined budget, so at which time Carl, myself, and others can see exactly what did they put. So with that, I just want to preface my remarks by saying that I'd just like to cover some of the ones that still concern me and upon which I'd like to see some particular detail. And the first of those, and I talked.
One second, will you be able to try that right, just so we can go, I don't, you can go ahead and talk too, but can you get it right?
I actually, I actually distributed, no, it's, it's different from that one, Vanessa. That's, it's, it's, I gave you two separate handouts at the finance meeting, but what I will do, I will go home, because there were only two members on that particular finance committee, and I will forward to you the comments that I actually did distribute to you people. I distributed two items.
Okay, I thought you, so here's, we reiterate what you said.
And I will do that by tomorrow. I'll email the members afterward. The first is, is, has Code Number 502, and that is the salaries. This is important to me because I'm concerned that if there is a mistake in the salary component, that that mistake is a legitimate mistake, and that mistake is not, now, why would I suggest that there might be some subterfuge here? But it might, would not be an attempt to maybe increase salaries in anticipation of an MOU. The comment that I made to the chief was, if I total up all the salaries, including the step up for one officer, I come up with a number of 904,000 that you were showing in the salary component under Code 502, not 904, but you were showing 941. So I'm asking, and I think we talked about this, please look at that because I believe it should have been 904. And I also believe that the holiday pay shown at 3,000 is the monthly sum, and that should have been multiplied by 12 for 36. And the consequence of these two changes is probably the same bottom line number, but I don't want to see it shown in salary, that's all. So I'm, I think.
I will respond to that because I did that Excel calculation. You are correct, that, that is true. That bottom line will stay the same, but they will change. It won't change the taxes because it's on all of it anyway.
All right, okay, so you, you.
Yes, we.
So it'll come in the next one?
Yes, it will.
All right, thank you. All right, that was one. The next one, I'm just going to kind of go by memory here, was the one that I also talked with the finance committee with, and I think there is some interest on the part of certain people here to take another look at this. And that is, in fact, I'd like to discuss it for the group here because some of you were not at that finance meeting. And that is a retirement fund. It's called 521T. It's the Retirement Trust Fund. Now, what we're talking about here, we actually have three, uh, three retirement funds. We have for, for medical, two, medical active, medical retired, and medical trust. And the trust is the fund that is set up to accumulate money for the payment of future obligations where, uh, medical costs. And right now, uh, I have seen information that suggests that the, that the total amount that should be in that fund is two and a half million dollars. But sitting in the fund today is approximately $670,000, so we have funded that only to the tune of 28% of the total obligation. We have done a much better job on the pension side, but we have done a very poor job on the medical side. So I would encourage you to take another look at the number that is currently being budgeted to put into that trust. It has been dropped from the previous year's 58,000 down to 15,000. And in my mind, that number should be significantly increased, and I believe that some consideration is going to go.
Yeah, I always think of that one also. So 521R and 521T are linked together, and they are dependent on the actuarial, actuarial study, the, the amount that, I think it's mainly 199 for the total, but that's not a real number. That's just an upped number from last year. We are in the process of having that study done effective July 1st. We should get an answer, we're hoping in time, but for sure by August. And that drives the combination. That will be always what our ARC is, what we have to fund. We fund it two ways, the pay as you go, which is the 521R, and then whatever's left, if we haven't paid that in cash, we fund into the 521T. So that's calculated into that study that we're paying for retirees currently. We believe, we are trying to get some answers from Calpers. I may have overestimated the 521R, which would drop that number and raise the 521T, but ultimately, that number altogether is not correct. We will have a new study out shortly, and we will make those adjustments.
All right. But just for the audience here, everybody needs to understand that when these calculations are made, determine how much money needs to be set aside, assumptions have to be taken into account. And these assumptions are critical to how much money you need to fund. So for example, I believe that in the latest actuarial report, they assume that the medical cost would rise at 4%. The latest that we're hearing from Calpers is that those costs could go up to five, and what we're also seeing is they could go up even greater. If these, if these assumptions are incorrect, and if you agree with this, these numbers can swing wildly, so.
They can, and that's why we're required every two years to redo it, to try to adjust.
But there was a problem there.
It's exponential if you were not.
There was a problem. We had two, uh, two audits done. One, the first audit that we have available to us are 2012, 2013, each done by a different accountant. Those audits used many different assumptions, and those assumptions in some cases were significant, and those changes in those assumptions made different, came up with different conclusions. So I just want to point out that you have the ability, and you were asked by the person that did your audit in 2013 to come back and talk with them about things. So they're just, I'm just, I'm just simply saying, it'd be a good idea to go and check on it just because we don't want to underfund. That's, that's my only point.
I, I would say we are not underfunded. That, I don't think that's a, a fair term. We fund, we, uh, we use an approved actuary that is done by the board if they, if they want that one, and you're right, those assumptions make a difference. But then it's being paid over 20 or 30 years, and so proportionately, we have, we have always met our obligation. Whether you agree with the assumptions or not is a different issue, right? But we're not underfunded, right? Percentage of the total, but it's supposed to take 20 years or 30 years, whatever that assumption, I mean, whatever's built into that calculation.
All right, we will.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that. Um, I would like to comment also on another one, which is, that's been raised by others here, and that's the automobile. We have put in the budget $3,000 for an automobile, and I believe it's another 18 or something for, um, for getting that automobile, that the equipment that it needs. Uh, so that's total $48,000 for automobile expenses. Um, yes, I believe, I would like to see, it would really make me feel good if we could defer that automobile purchase for another year. After all, we were told by Chief Harmon just as recently as January, when he was attempting to balance the budget at our finance meeting, that he was pulling that automobile out of the budget, and now here, five months later, we're seeing it put back in. So it seems like a moving target we have set. I, I don't want to go into, I just, I would like, I appreciate if you could take a closer look at automobile. A couple of other things that are important to me, and I discussed these with the chief. And those are that, excuse me, with the GM. And those are that, um, we are showing in our budget a 10% reserve, and I would like to see that reserve requirement raised up to 25%. Almost all communities have, our size and stature have a 25-plus reserve requirement. And I would also like to see, um, the restricted funds, the principal one being the, um, the one for baby refugees set aside as restricted. So I'd like to see that also included as, as, as a line item. I think I can save the rest of my comments for when we meet again on July 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the modification, will the revised or modified budget be presented at this June, July 9th meeting, or will there be an opportunity beforehand for financial people to have some input and?
Let me, let me, let me respond to that. I think we probably are going to have to have another finance committee meeting. I don't think there's going to be enough time between now and July 9th to do all the homework we need to do on the budget. So the August meeting, I think it'll be 13. So we need to have another finance committee before August 13th.
Sometime between July 9th and August of.
Yes, yes. I think that's.
There's a lot of detail, and it just needs you to be timed to go.
Really, just a quick question, and that is, why are the franchise fees being considered restricted? It's my understanding that the franchise fees are not subject to Prop 218. They meet the exemptions, or one of the exemptions in Prop 226, which has seven exemptions. Prop 26 actually manages the constitutional provisions that were made by 218, and it provides for an exemption on fees that therefore do not make their taxes. Prop 26 established, um, new definitions as to what a tax is pursuant to the constitution as it is meant by 218. You look at Prop 26, you find at least one exemption that probably allows a franchise fee to not be considered a tax. And the League of California Cities has put together a Prop 26 guideline document. And if you look at that closely, and it's not, it is not a legal opinion, it's just an assessment. And if you look at that closely, they at least suggested, or concluded, that franchise fees associated with solid waste contracts are not considered a tax. are not considered a tax, and therefore are exempt from due income provisions. So my only suggestion is that you look at that more closely, maybe ask legal opinion for that. And what I'm not suggesting is that that money goes into the general funds for use for all purposes. I think, one, you should continue to track it as such, under franchise fee line item. And secondly, it should be primarily used to manage the solid waste contract. But if there is a need, for some urgency, those funds should be available to the district for use. My end of my questions.
Thanks, we'll look at that.
I just want to comment briefly. We all remember the negotiation for the B and U contract. As the contract was presented to the public, those funds were supposed to be restricted for garbage-related expenses, public garbage pickup, and legal fees and public education. So I think, I think we should remain positive with the fact that we guaranteed this to rate pairs in exchange of their support for the contract that we now have. You know, and I just want to, we presented it to the public quite differently, and...
Well, I understand that. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't set them aside primarily for use for the solid, managing the contract, both present contract and for future. What I'm saying is that they shouldn't be line item as restricted funds because they are not restricted pursuant to either Prop 26 or Prop 2018, that's my only point. So if you display them, you should display them as non-restricted funds. Regardless of what the ingredient was on the public.
All right, any comments by the board?
Mr. Hulker, before we begin, to the extent that we're going to be talking about legal fees, because those will affect our firm...
Did you say government?
Yes. To the extent the board's going to talk about legal fees because those, that discussion could affect our firm which is a source of income to me, I would be required in a legal format to step out of the room during that discussion. So want to do that first, address the issue? Or just, when you get to that point, I will leave the room and come back in.
Hey, well, does anybody on the board want to discuss that issue at this time?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll call you back. No, go away. Hey, who wants to go first, Vanessa or Michelle?
This is Carl and I had this discussion very briefly. And I believe that $150,000 set aside now is very excessive. I move, Carl, that I'd like to see reduced actually to $70,000. I'd like to see the balance shifted over to fund improvements to the community center. I think if we find ourselves in a bind, and we need to execute that expense and go over budget for legal fees, then we should do that and make the reason very compelling and very public. I'm not comfortable at all with $150,000. You know, when I'm on a diet and I want ice cream, I go and get an ice cream home because I know that's my limit. Because if I go by a court, it'll be gone. And I certainly feel like we need some kind of control or disciplinary philosophy when it comes to how we resolve conflict in our community and disputes.
Yes, I think that the fees are also excessive. I want to make it, have a stricter goal. I know that General Manager Hart said he didn't want to come back to us and say, "I have to ask for more." But I wouldn't think that that was something that we would be blaming you for. I think that that would be instructive to all of us. So my recommended limit, because we are having, we have a $60,000 contract. It's only, right now, in the preliminary stages, four months. But I would like to see a budget of approximately $88,800. That's our $60,000 contract, plus an extra $2,400 a month, which is approximately one extra eight-hour day for each month. So that's, we are in negotiations with, in regards to the MLE. We are using, asking for some new advice because they're a new law group, and we are new board members, new general manager. So I do want some expansion in that budget, but I don't want to see that, would not be able to vote for $150,000.
I'd also like to make a comment. As someone who does budgets for clients for a living, I too believe that we need to limit the budget because I do believe that lawyers are... I do believe, I also believe that we need to limit the budget because I do believe, I do believe that we need to limit the budget to less than $150,000. I am hopeful that we will not have a kind of legal problems or enter into the kinds of legal disputes that we've had in the past. I'm optimistic about that. And so I too would have some number that's less than $150,000. We will need something in addition, I imagine, to the $5,000 per month that we're spending as a retainer for this firm. So, Michelle, your idea of an extra eight hours per month may be right. I would suggest that we try to work a fee that's $5,000 per month plus a negotiated rate for additional hours, and come up with some kind of a recommendation to the board. So it's not unusual for lawyers to negotiate their fees. We have flat fees, we have some kind of reduced rate or blended rate for additional hours to the retainer. We ought to explore all those options, and I think the amount ought to be less than $150,000 if we need to do that. So there is no board majority if we seek to pocket more than $150,000, we think independently.
Chuck, did you have a comment?
Well, I can tell you right now, it's going to come up in just one labor negotiations, over above $5,000. So you're going to come close to $100,000 without looking your eye. That's just a fact of life. The board and the community app store are willing to take on this responsibility for negotiating this new contract, and that's an expensive process. And I don't know that you can cut it down as deep as you want. I don't want to put restrictions on this board's ability to make discretionary increases in your budget out of the economy and then somehow tie our hands. That's unfair of the board. If you want to lower the money to a reasonable amount based on what our contract will be, our four-month period is almost over, frankly, so it is up for negotiation. You can't really do that number until you've spoken with counsel. So, yeah, we all want to reduce the money. We all want to spend $150,000 legal fees. But until you know what kind of relationship you're going to have with your counsel, it may not be easy, or maybe somebody else wrong, you know? You can't fix the number right now.
All right, well, I have discussed this a little bit with the general manager and with Carl Hulker, as I mentioned before. I think that we should do our best to quantitatively estimate what the bill will be, looking at what we spent so far with the new firm and what we anticipate spending with the new firm as time goes on. As Chuck pointed out, one expense item will be the negotiation. We've dragged on too long. We've also been paying extra to have them appear at these first few meetings so the community could get to know them. I don't think we want to have to come to every meeting. So I think we can, assuming we maintain a contract resembling in some way what it is now, I think we can get ourselves into mode where we can, you know, skip to that $5,000 a month unless something unexpected happens once we get over the sort of introductory phase and the negotiation phase. So what I would like to do is have the general manager come up with, you know, as quantitative and realistic an estimate as he can of what that figure will be. I think if that will be significantly less than $150,000, we can go over that in the next finance meeting. But I think that's the most sane way to go about it. I do agree with Carl that we need to use these items as disciplinary tools. You know, we set a limit. We want to be realistic, but we also want to make it so that we have to expend a little bit of effort to make that limit. If we go over the limit, we go over, fine, we explain why we did. But it's not, you know, we don't want to license ourselves to spend whatever we want to spend. And I think, you know, the ice cream analogy stands. And I think Carl is right, we put $150 in there, it's likely we're going to spend it, but we have permission. So that's what I'd like to see. I don't want to see any change tonight. But I'm hoping we'll adopt the preliminary budget as is with an understanding that that figure is going to change after, you know, the solid analysis of what we realistically anticipate.
So a couple of comments. One, I believe that part of the $5,000 a month is for our general counsel to attend these meetings. I do think he will be at every meeting, and I think that's probably a good thing so that people can have benefit of the public counsel. And it's included in the retainer of $5,000 a month. I'd like to volunteer to work with General Manager Hart. As someone who negotiates these things on the other side, I can probably bring value added to help him think about creative ways of getting the number to a realistic amount. So if you want that assistance, I'm happy to provide it.
Absolutely. And one of the unknown factors, as already mentioned, is the fact that we have current negotiations in progress with, you know, unknown results at this time. So that's unknown we have. As mentioned, we have the retainer fee, which does pay for a legal counsel, which I can't control when individual board members make calls or send emails because that is biblical time. So I'm trying to manage that as much as possible.
Well, we could, we could have a rule, though, if there's sort of a limit for each board member, a certain amount of hours allotted per month for consultation that we can't exceed, stuff like that.
And it sounded like John Holtzman, who's a partner in this firm, described that in ducktails, what Pat suggested. And I think Len, you were on this call with me, and we were speaking with John Gassam. And John said, sometimes in labor negotiations, you know, the best labor negotiator isn't necessarily a labor attorney.
Right.
You know, and that. And so I think we're with the right, the kind of firm that would be open to innovation in how we sort of construct this service model. So I would support Pat, Richard, and John Gassam.
And just so we're clear, lawyers are asked all the time to budget how much money they think they're going to spend on a project. So it's very easy for us to say, how much time do you think we need to spend on labor negotiations? What's that going to cost? So, and then we can look at that number and see whether we think it's reasonable. So it's not unusual for lawyers to be asked that. I think we ought to make those kinds of inquiries and see if we can work some out in the field.
Great. I just, for everyone's knowledge also, I'm trying to put together the July 9th budget this week, preferably, based on trying to give the community and the board a good amount of time to review it by the July 9th meeting, and we have a holiday there as well. So it's a tight, it's a tight time for everybody, but...
Well, can I ask that we shoot for a number around $90,000, knowing that we're going to have to be flexible on that and that we may have to come back? But, I mean, I'm glad you wanted to do that, but I just want, you know, to think about and understand that that's a fluid number.
At the board's direction, I can put any number in there less than 150. If you want to go with 150, I will just tell you that up to, there's been some questions by the members of the audience tonight. Up to today's date for this fiscal year, we have spent over $250,000 this fiscal year so far. So I plugged in 150, and it's sort of a level with no specific, you know, articulate facts surrounding that, other than knowing that I want to try to manage it and make it less. So it's open to any kind of quantified structure to best guess based on the circumstances. And I had very little to go with, based on the circumstances. That's how we had it.
Of course. But prior to April, we were with a different firm and had no contract. And so we had a relationship, but we had no dollar, set dollar amount that they were willing to charge us for billable hours in the way that we have it now with public law.
And there's an escalated clause on that, you know, that current contract that we have. After a certain amount of hours, it goes up to a higher rate. So the more we use with the firm, with Randy's firm, and Randy's tutelage, it's going to cost us more money. So we have to be very careful with quite a conservative amount of hours that we have with him to stay within the limit that we have with the $60,000.
That being said, your extra eight hours, are they at the $5,000 rate? Or are they at the actual...
I approximated $300 an hour because I was kind of presuming that Adam Benson is less, you know, and John Holtzman is more, and not knowing what kind of services. So I kind of looked for an adoption of somewhat of a middle ground. So $300 an hour is $2,400.
So I'll try to have something back for working with Erica Gillette in consultation, try to come up with some kind of structure relative to that. So at least we have a guideline as to why we're putting that figure, whatever that figure is, 90, 120, 80, whatever it is.
I think the easy way to do it is to say we've got, we know we have coming up labor negotiations, and we have just monthly consultation that may seem to be $5,000. And so I think we can ask them for an estimate of what that looks like for the year, and they should be able to give us a number, and then we can see whether we need to negotiate on that.
That'll work.
But I think that's better than picking a random number. I understand your, the idea of an additional eight hours. We may not need an additional eight hours, frankly, because we have $5,000. But we may need $20,000 to negotiate the contract. I just don't know what they're going to propose. But I think, I think we should be able to come up with something that would be closer to reality.
Just one more comment. I think having general counsel available to us at the meetings, particularly in closed session. I think closed session, I think the last three or four sessions have been particularly productive, and I think a lot has to do with Mr. Riddle. And I've actually enjoyed closed session very much. So I would advocate that we really do what we can to retain a general counsel presence.
All right, well, that all being said, do I have your motion to adopt the preliminary budget?
Oh, can we, anything else? And there's some...
I'm sorry, I thought we were...
Sorry. How'd you gather that on the matter?
So, Stephanie, you're not going to change that number? Or you aren't going to change the number of the preliminary budget?
We're going to make...
We're going to change by the line item, let's put it that way.
We hope we have a change by July 9th. We're going to look for, reduce that number.
Okay, can I bring them in? So do I have a motion to adopt?
General comments about the budget itself, or are they...
Sure.
Move on? Okay. So, here are my, here's my line item input. I love that you have begun looking at how our office works and how things are incorporated. So I'm enthusiastic about a new functioning phone system, and thank you for going out and taking bits and figuring that out. And I am enthusiastic about, after working with Mr. Artis, Mr. Anderson, Sergeant Bowie, about having some sort of weapons policy seems a very productive idea, and I appreciate that. I'm a little cautious about the vehicle as well. I feel that at this time, I would want to do more research myself. And so I apologize, but because of the timeline, I don't feel informed enough to vote positively on that. I would like to see a higher reserve number. I would like to see about 15% of our budget. I think we need to move that incrementally. I don't want to see us jump. Maybe we go to 12%, maybe we even, but baby steps to a higher reserve. I do want to see the franchise fees restricted. I understand your comment, but there was discussions around the RFP and with the board prior to my arrival that that was up in the air legally. And I'm happy to have that decision and discussion informed by the public law group. But I would be very reticent for this district to be the front runners on spending what could be restricted funds on unrestricted causes. Plus, it was said at the last meeting... Plus, it was said at the last meeting that $31,000 of this year's franchise fee must return to the general fund that it was borrowed against previously. So that out of that, this year's $42,000 from last fiscal year, 21, 31 must be moved back into our general fund because it was borrowed off. Line item 668. I would like to see something put towards the annex.
Rochelle, I'm sorry, I didn't, what was your point about repaying the general fund? Were you disagreeing with that or not?
No, no, just that it needs to happen.
Okay.
And that, that I think that there perhaps was a public awareness, there was not awareness on my end, my part, that that $31,000 had been borrowed.
There was some question as to whether we could legally move, whether we could actually do that.
Oh, okay.
But we always wanted to do that, but anyway.
Oh, okay. I had it done, and myself we had to repay, so that, okay, no, it wasn't, that was said at the finance committee meeting, and maybe that's.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the wording was, that wasn't there. But the $31,000, so traditionally, the bay view money has always been used only for garbage, and it, over the years, built quite a balance, which was then completely used during negotiations. That $31,000 negative is the amount that the general fund has overfunded where there were no resources for bay view.
Yeah, no, that's, yes.
Right. So the intention, it can't be moved, there isn't any money yet, but the intention is that the new fees coming in will repay that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say.
Okay.
Yeah, we just weren't sure if it was legal to do that at first, that's all, apparently is, so that's, I think, what we all want to do.
Okay.
No, no, yeah, it was the general fund loaning to the RFP, so that the franchise fees will in turn pay the general fund.
Correct.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry, 678, that's the annex. I would, I would like to see a nominal amount, maybe $1,000, put in there for exploration of what's going to happen with the annex hopefully in the next year. I would like to see on 6, I'm sorry, 6, that was 668. Six, sorry, Rochelle, what is with the 668? On the annex, I would just like to see a nominal amount in case we need to do any exploration of how to use that facility next year. It might not be used, it might, but I would like to just put something in there on the budget. 678 miscellaneous park and rec expense, I would like to propose $1,000 to go into that category. I noticed that we have nothing in the budget for Eagle Scout projects and things, and I've already been approached by an assistant scout master to discuss a project in the park repainting of the flagpole, and some other projects that they would like to assist with labor, and so I was hoping to maybe have something like that there.
Actually, as a former scout mother, and there are two Eagle Scouts, and the past funds were taken by scouts going to the improvement club and the KCC and actually soliciting funds to pay for their projects. It was very unusual for funds to be used on the services to certain budgeted areas.
Oh, I guess it was just, it was listed on, on a page, and I'm sorry, I don't know which page it was, that said Eagle Scout projects.
69.
69, thank you. And so I had presumed that we did budget sometimes for projects that benefited our park area.
So you did a nominal amount.
That's.
I was thinking about, I didn't have time to research in terms of what outdoor paint
would cost, and Mr. Riddle had suggested that the last time the flagpole had been, flagpole, excuse me, had been painted was in his driveway 20 years ago, and he was hoping that it, we didn't think it'd last another winter if we got rain.
Thank you.
And I do have several ideas for Eagle Scout projects.
Okay, I will.
For discussion.
I will round those fellows up. And then 674 is the, just park construction expense. I know now it's listed just in unrestricted funds, but I would like to see $241,000 that the board has promised moved over into that fund, or at minimum $158,000 for Measure WW. It's not, clearly, we're probably not going to get to that level of construction this year, but I would like to make people aware that that's what is being budgeted for, and that's where it should lie.
It wouldn't lie in the 600 account, it would have to be in the 900 account, it would be the Capitol.
The Capitol of LA.
And it would have to.
Oh, yes.
It would have to be an intention of spending it this year. It is earmarked in the reserves because there's cash that is being held.
Okay.
But if you really believe it's not going to be spent, it really shouldn't be.
Oh, it won't.
It is, it is allocated on the cash side.
Restricted.
But I didn't want to use restricted because I don't know how restricted, you know, the levels of restriction, but yes, it is earmarked for that, and that's different than a current expenditure.
Okay.
Right? So the decision is whether there's one, but either way, it would be on the 900 account.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Then I would like to see 972, maybe approximately $25,000. I would hope to have RFP recommendation that the park building committee had made a recommendation for on this agenda. If it didn't happen, it will be on the July 9 agenda, so there is already the possibility of spending funds, so.
So I'm sorry, Rochelle, spending funds for what?
For seismic analysis.
Okay.
So the park building committee has made a recommendation for the board to spend money. So, so 972, I can see approximately $20,000, $25,000 real possibility of being spent.
I could actually see more than that if we.
I could, yes, I could see, I'm happy to, I'll take 50. I will happily, my committee will happily. But we will, you know, quite, you know, within reason and with approval and all those things. So.
I hope actually we get a little further than that, but.
That's good. So what was the report your final suggestion was to do? 972, well, let's, let's say, well.
Let's say 50. So I've got to say, the Capitol, just say, let's say 50. I mean, what is expected? Do we have some estimate or something, or?
We do have estimates, you've got, well, go ahead.
Oh, we do have, we do have a recommendation for seismic analysis, depending on what the board chooses, that range is anywhere from 10,000 to $16,000. Then there is in the pipeline the possibility of ADA analysis and/or improvements. So that initially, we're looking at maybe $2,000, and then maybe going up from there, but we would have had to see what was.
Well, so why would we put 50 in?
Well, I'd say it's not inconceivable that you would start construction before you have this year. I would hope you would, maybe that's not realistic, but that's important, because if you actually want to, once you've done your estimates, and if you want to get a contract, if somebody actually started working on building, that's going to run into a lot of money.
And the construction we're talking about is seismic improvements only?
Pretty much. There might be ADA improvements to work that out.
At this point, yeah. And I think we're working very, the committee's working very hard, and we have another meeting scheduled for July 15 in this building, but we will have a recommendation for you before July 9, if we look like we're, what our goal is, that we must have the WW grant money spent, $158,000, by 2018. And so we really are gearing up to get things going, so that we have spent that money, so that we get it back. So it's free money, essentially, once we put that in, not, not entirely, but we need to do those improvements.
So I'm just wondering, and maybe this is the wrong time to bring this up, what the grand plan is? Is it that we would physically update the building and then think about any other changes that we may want to make?
We will, we should, our, Siara, or would you like to speak? I'm sorry, would you like to call?
Yes, a member of the building committee, right now, could you speak? Absolutely, delighted to.
Thank you.
Right now, the purpose of the structural engineer is to give us the constraints of the building, how is it really built, where are the weaknesses, so that when we move ahead, this will inform our discussion of what can be done with the building. Thank you. It's, I mean, it's, it's learning about, it's the constraints of property.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation. I just wasn't clear on what you were spending money on.
Well, if I could add to that, though, I think there's kind of understanding that, you know, who knows what the building will be ultimately, but the most important urgent thing now is to get the seismic upgrade so that we can feel safe in here, and maybe, you know, a few more years down the line, we talk about building improvements that, you know, allow for different uses and things like that. But, you know, Mezrel was kind of a do-it-all-at-once kind of thing, and now it looks like we're going to have a piece of it, the person is getting the safety issues taken care of, code issues taken care of. Get that done, get the Mezrel WW money spent, so we don't lose it. Then if we want to think about more grandiose stuff, we can do that, but that's kind of a different stage.
Thank you. That's the end of my.
So, based on the current estimates, I'm thinking $25,000 probably being added amount just to get to the seismic and record effect, and then we'll potentially cut back.
Then how about in August, I could give you more solid numbers and documentation that would fairly represent.
More data, please.
Yes. Yeah, that would be great. And then, yeah, I'm happy with 20, I'm very happy with 20.
So you're doing 25?
Yes. I know you get some.
Sure.
I'm a little confused, so are we doing the budget, or are we simply going to talk about a limited primary, getting preliminary budgets done so we can get our legal obligation by July 1? All these discussions are really good, and I'm glad you're having them, but it seems to me that this is something that really should be done at July 9, when we have our first formal meeting of the budget and people to pay the part. I came into this meeting, my thinking, we're going to do a review of Mr. Hart's preliminary budget needing legal obligation, and now we're having a full-fledged discussion. Or is that, did I miss something along the way?
Well, actually, that's the way I thought it would go too, but, you know, people have some good ideas, so.
Hi, everyone.
I know you have requests.
Let's do it. I move that we take a five-minute recess and reconvene, and then I'll come in.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let's do it.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? I, your opposed, so motion passes. As I remember, you had a bonus provided to one.
Very organized, it's a big case. Okay. I don't think you can hear me. Page 45, this is code 576. I'm sorry, 45?
What number?
Code 576, page 45 in your packet. It's very quick. The last line item is $600 for miscellaneous meeting supplies, and I'm wondering how that fact is, is $6,000 that's been budgeted in code 582 for office supplies? Are these lunches, are they truly supplies?
One more time. I'm sorry.
Okay. Code 576, there's meeting supplies from the general manager, $600, and I just want to make sure that's, these aren't lunches, these are true meeting supplies, and then if they are, how are they different from what's budgeted in code 582, which is $6,000 for the office supplies? And you can get back to me.
I don't, there wouldn't be lunches, you know, she said lunches.
Good, great. So what kind of other meeting supplies that go beyond the district budget?
Right, well, I can only.
Yes, do you know what it is?
It might be supplies needed to attend other meetings.
Okay.
So, for example, attending a CSDA meeting, you know, some additional, something.
Why don't you, how about you, we look at it, and we, and we'll talk about that later?
Absolutely. But not lunches.
Okay. Let's see, code 594, which is page 52 of your packet. Len knows this is a story point of mine. You know, we spent $10,000 in unfunded money to build a new website, and I don't think a week goes by when I don't hear a complaint, that the website is hard to navigate, that it's just not very intuitive. I also note here, it seems like we're paying website maintenance at $2,000, and it was my understanding that Sergeant Hewie was talented enough to help us out with that. And so I'm not going to clue what the $2,000, as much as I would like, if we could put out a call to the many residents here who know HTML, we, myself, could probably offset this cost somehow in the future and possibly help improve the navigation of our site, so folks are less frustrated. I know we need to talk about that, but I just wanted to point that out, that, and that's, that's just on the side.
Right. Does website maintenance, the posting stuff on the website, is that what it means?
The problem is, we, our website is hosted by a major supply organization called Post Gator at $15 per month, that's included in here. There's work that needs to be done periodically by Aaron Gottler, we need to allow funds for that, and that is beyond regular posting, this is uploading things that are, or making changes, revisions to the website that are beyond what staff capacity is.
Thank you. Will you charge us an hour later?
Yes, you guys, it's a discount to give for a government agency.
And as a former resident, I'll also tell you, Director, that I have some issues with the website as well, and I will also tell you that I met with Aaron today, and so we're looking at a couple, a few changes, and his expenses, you know, will obviously need to be charged out in something to an account, and that's one of the, obviously, the, so we need to improve the website so it's a little more user-friendly, and if parents look a little bit more like kids that that should look like.
Perfect. Thank you. Page 65, this is code 668. I'm going to duck tell to what Director Scherf's law offered about the annex. A few mothers have come to me proposing that they sort of take over the annex and use it as a teen center, a teen center which they would be having to supervise after school. And I said, well, you know, that building hasn't been maintained in some time, and these hiltup moms said, well, you know, we'll get the dads' pleasure to fix it. And I just want to sort of, again, remind ourselves that we have a very, we have many assets in the community and has skill and talent in this elbow grease, and I hate to see one of our capital assets sort of just deteriorating and not being utilized.
So, Director, I have, I have toured the annex, and it is an adorable building, that if I had my choice of my money, you would, you know, be able to fix that and bring that back up to a certain code compliance, there is ADA issues, there is water damage, and there is asbestos issue. So I believe the report that I have found on the previous chairman's desk lists $125,000 as a rough estimate, just to bring it up to manageable, usable facility.
Okay.
So any money we put in there, that would be unfortunately long-term, won't, unless we can find the resources now.
Like a grant, if it's charging you?
Yes, and I do have, I don't have to be in the schedule yet, but I'm trying to get a meeting with our supervisor to see if he is able to throw any money towards at least the annex, that we have some ability to have some resources for this building here, but the annex is my next bite of the apple. And a big opportunity for the county to give back to kids and kids that the pressure will.
And Secret Service has a history of being very supportive of youth development, so that's very.
So if I can get $150,000 out of the supervisor, then we can at least bring it up to a certain kind of speed and code.
And I think we could leverage it in grants. I would like to see more.
Absolutely. And you and I have talked about that as well.
Perfect.
It's certainly on my list, all right, things to do, but right now, it takes a while.
I'm happy to put it on the park building agenda, if you want to throw it our way, then we're happy to do legwork and research for you and work with you, and so, and that perhaps can be, perhaps it's something that moves along more quickly, maybe that is where WW money goes. If we, if this is a slow project, then we can work together and figure that out.
That's a great idea. All right, thank you.
Okay. Page 77, please. It's code 865. This has to do with the subsidy receipt from the fire district for the $1 release, and it's my understanding that. And it's my understanding that this contract ends soon, I think within two years. And do you know any...
It's a three-year contract.
Is it three-year?
Last year was the first year we're in it, we started in the second year now.
Okay. And I'm wondering if, or I'm not wondering, I'm asking that if in future projections, we can actually budget in the $30,000 in case the Fire District does not renew our $1 deal?
I think you say that it's not $30,000. From my understanding from their last budget meeting, that their expenses are $108,000 a year. They took their expenses over a 20-year period, divided them by 20, and they came to $108,000 a year. So that technically, our expense would be 54... They estimate that we use half the space in the buildings, and our expense would be 54,000.
So that's the material impact to annual projection if indeed in two years, they come back to us and it's more than $1? So could you sort of contemplate that? I'm looking at that, so I think that's a significant, I hope that doesn't happen. But in case it hap, it does happen, I think if that's not budgeted, we're gonna find ourselves in a kind of a position that can significantly affect me.
So, Director, it's not an expense that I anticipated for next year or the year after.
No, that's true. I'm talking about projections, so your files...
This is just a budget for expenses for next year.
Right.
All right, based on our revenue I anticipate, so...
And I'm asking for that to be contemplated in projections moving forward.
Perfect. Absolutely. And I will want to, who knows if I'm here back in 2018, but I would want to negotiate that as much as possible because I, we have a very small footprint in comparison with the Fire Department. I love the Fire Department, but, you know, we've got to sit down and roll up our sleeves and go through some negotiation rounds of that $30,000.
Okay. Page 79, this is Code 890. Sort of a similar scenario. This has to do with the county's hazardous waste fee, which was supposed to be renegotiated in May of this year. And we expected it to increase. And I'm wondering if we've accounted for that, if we've had that conversation with the county, and what that figure is and has it been reflected in the 90-year?
Why, what were you mentioning, do we expect it to...
Well, we're negotiating the Bayview contract. We could not contemplate, we cannot give an estimate what the hazardous waste number may be because the contract was supposed to end in May of this year. And we're supposed to go back to the time of renegotiation, would it be moving forward? So I'm wondering if that happened, and if so, you know, is the increase materially different enough to affect this line item?
I don't think there's been an increase. They haven't indicated there's been one.
Yeah. But, and I looked at my pocket, I'm just asking, because it's my understanding that contract ended in May. Okay. Could you look into that?
Sure.
Thank you. The police car, patrol car, I'm sorry. Because without saying that I don't approve the purchase of a new one at this time. I hope we can defer that. That's just a statement. And that's all I have for you.
I didn't want to have to comment about the vehicle, but, Director. So, it has, there's two vehicles that have over 100,000 miles. And when we talk about police cars, I know the comments from the community told me we talk about police cars, we talk about liability, we look at 100,000 miles. This is something that is universal throughout law enforcement with regard to emergency vehicles.
But if you actually just Google, you know, the longevity of a patrol car, you'll see that other municipalities are facing the same budget concerns that we are. And they've sort of modified this arbitrary $100,000, you know, lifespan for a car. So I'm wondering if, you know, we could revisit that in a way that was a little more appropriate to our particular financial...
We could certainly revisit it, all right? However, we need to establish, all right, a set of replacement for our vehicles and for our fleets. And we have two vehicles that have over 100,000 miles. The other five are fine, but we have two. So if we defer, we're gonna defer, and we're gonna be down the road again and have that same concern. And that's just a, trying to get it on practice of maintenance, all right, as well as replenishing the fleet of vehicles we have. So that's why I budgeted it there. I understand that you, Harmon, pulled it from last night because of concerns before. So it's typically...
Right, and I think that's what's raised here.
So usually, really, maintenance-wise, is it paid to keep a car over 100,000 miles? And, you know, the thing, the reason one might want to defer buying a new car is because even though maintenance is actually more costly, you spread it out over more time. So that's really the consideration you have to engage in there. So I'm sure you'll come up with a good formula.
Can you tell us how many miles they use every year? I mean, are we talking another 10,000 miles per year, or is it more than that?
Well, first off, it's, you know, people, when people think miles, all right, they think of Kensington. You just can't do that, unfortunately, all right? That's only part of it. Other parties' response for other services outside, and other responses for training, there's a lot of other usage for those vehicles. So, I mean, I know I've had some conversations with members of the community, it's like, I got to tell you, how can we have 100,000 miles on any car, for that matter? And it does add up. The car that I wanted to replace is over 10 years old. So it's reached its life. I did ask for some pictures from range today, and I did not get them, unfortunately, because I didn't want to pay overtime to get them. There were some pictures I was going to show you in case, and it's just in poor condition, and it doesn't represent the professionalism that I want to bring to Kensington.
You could take the red tape to it and just...
I have a broken taillight, I have, you know, broken seats and all this stuff added up, so...
Can I, one question? Is this to, this proposed replacement a sedan or an SUV?
It's a sedan.
And is the tractor is no longer being manufactured, is my understanding, so is it an Apollo-type car or...
It's an Apollo or Taurus, that kind of thing.
Excellent.
Yes, it's not. We have two brand-new, essentially, explorers. We don't need another one for, you know, three, four years rather than a sport.
So I do still have my same questions. It's just, could you let us know, if we were to not do this this year, how many miles should we expect the car to have on it by next year? If it's gonna be 50,000 miles more, that's one thing. It's gonna be $5,000, 5,000 miles more, that's another one.
So like a yearly mileage?
Exactly. Well, he said that the car was over 10 years old and over 100,000, so that would be an average of 10,000 miles a year.
Of course, I drive an 11-year-old car that has 90,000 miles. And I think a lot of members of this community are as frugal as I am about purchasing new cars. So I think we'll need more information to sort of inform the decision and cultivate more support. And I think Pat's right, there has to be some kind of threshold that makes sense as a policy.
I understand.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more on the preliminary proposed budget? Do I hear a motion to adopt it?
I'm going to adopt the preliminary proposed budget.
I second the motion. Any discussion further?
It's just a preliminary budget. Yeah, it sounds...
That's a preliminary, it's been a change, folks.
And I made my motion with that.
Okay, which one do you think the motion, please, just give the motion?
Oh, I move the adopted preliminary budget.
Preliminary proposed?
Yeah.
Oh, preliminary budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. We have one no vote from Vanessa Cordula. All right, can we go question?
Vanessa, what would it take to have the vote yes?
I'd like to see the legal fees of commitment now on the desk that it will be indeed below $3,000. I would like to see, I think that is just a driver for me, I can't, I can't do it. I just really can't. I think it sets us up for, I think there are better ways to resolve disputes. I know there will be disputes in life, but I just think that it's, I'm unwilling to do it. I can't do it.
I just want to make it clear that I believe all of us have concerns about legal fees when we are another, up or down. And by voting in favor of preliminary budget, at least I am doing that, because my understanding is we have to do that in order to move forward. I don't anticipate that the legal fees will be $100,000.
No, I think actually, pretty much all of you, that's... All right, we move then to item one. The proposal to adopt supplemental special tax, N G.
Yes, 2010, the voters of Kensington Police Protection Community Services District approved the supplemental special tax in the amount of $200 per year for single-family residential parcels with the amount of properties in use categories identified in order in 2010 dash one, provide a source of funding for police protective services. In consideration for fiscal year 2015, maximum amount, annual amount of supplemental special tax for each category of property shall be determined by multiplying the preceding fiscal year's maximum special tax by an inflation rate factor in the amount not to exceed the increase in the Consumer Price Index as published by the U.S. Department of Labor for the period of April 2014 to April 2015, San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area. Consumer Price Index, that everyone's familiar with. The increase in the Consumer Price Index from fiscal year 2014 to 15 to fiscal year 2015 to 16 is 2.436%. If approved, as presented, this will generate approximately $13,000 in additional revenue. Previous year's rate increases imposed are listed below, and I'll just read them briefly. Supplemental tax for 2011 to 2012 was $179 per parcel for single family. Multiple family was 268. Commercial and industrial was 268. Miscellaneous approved property was 179. Unapproved was $1.53. 2012, 2013, for single families, was the exact same rate as 2011, 2012. So the board took action to leave it the way that it was between 2011, 2012, 2012, 2013. In 2013, 2014, the single-family residential rate was raised to $214.91. Multiple-family residence was 322.36. Commercial institutional was 322.36. Miscellaneous approved property was 214.91. And unapproved was 64.47. 2014, 2015 supplemental tax for single-family dwelling was 220.09. And I need to check that, it was 09 and 90, I got an email on that. I may have transposed 09 and 90 on the actual resolution. So I've got to double-check that. Local family residence was 331.35. Commercial was 331. Miscellaneous was, approved property was 220.90. Unapproved property was 66.27. I provided a chart that provides for what the current maximum tax rate is and what the maximum rate would be if we raised it to 2.4%. It was then raised from 220 currently to 226 for single family. Multiple residential units from 331 to 339. Commercial, 331 to 339. Miscellaneous approved property, 220 to 226. Unapproved property from 66 to 67. So I recommend that the board review the fact that they take public comment, vote great, and if so desired, adopt resolution 2015 dash five as presented.
Comments, anybody? Oh, my name is still roughly. This is really a set of comments and questions. I'm not sure which is which, really. The, I think, from your statement, Chief Hart, the GM Hart, that the board recognized that they don't have to go all the way up to the maximum CPI. They can go zero or anywhere in between.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. The second point is that there are actually multiple CPIs for that metropolitan statistical area from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And I just suggest that the GM and the board look at one of the CPIs from the same source, Bureau of Labor Statistics, that is more specifically relevant to the expenses and the people affected by the CPI, rather than just adopting the idea of applying the general CPI for the region. And, for example, the CPI for the period in question for all urban consumers is 2.4. This is today, from last year, March through April. And March to April. And then the CPI for urban wage earners, which I think is more directly relevant, is 2.0. Being a number one, I just think that it's good to think about the assumptions and which numbers actually are the standards to which the budget should be held.
So can I ask you a question? Would you explain what that means, urban wage earners, that people would have raised?
Yeah, that is, people would have, both of those numbers, the 2.4 and the 2.0, are within the same statistical metropolitan area of San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. Yes, the numbers that I've been quoting are from the same area, the same metropolitan area, which is, as far as I know, the same one that is being used when the 2.4 or something number was quoted. And suggesting that we look at one of the other CPIs from this exact same source with the exact same area, the ones of the same peoples, at the Bureau of Labor Statistics in the term of labor, that is more specifically relevant to the population affected by the raises in question. And that since we're talking about wage earners as opposed to everybody in that region, the more specific definition may be the one to use. I'm not saying that's absolutely what we should do. I'm saying that a little more attention should be paid to this assumption. And there may be a better one.
Thank you very much. Since you're a gentleman's girl, can you tell us what's on the, basically, what that was mean?
It's why you would divide, for the break, you would divide the 2.0 over 2.432. And that ratio would be the 2.87 times the amount of increase that you're currently anticipating or considering.
Thank you, man.
So it'd be a lower increase, but I think more relevant to the people, again, who are affected by the need to accommodate.
Thank you very much.
I did want to make one comment in front of the next speaker. Previous speaker indicated a different kind of tax rate from a different area. The actual proposition that was elected and voted upon does specifically outline San Francisco, Bay Area, San Jose area, and that's a lot of the side of the 2.4.
So that these, these numbers that I quote today, there's no point in, I'm not arguing it. I just think that perhaps we could talk it over and then look at the sources and make sure we're talking about the same one. Yeah, this is the same region.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking apples to apples because...
We're talking about San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose.
Correct.
The Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers, which are collected by any sense of...
Which would you call, you remember, meaning subcategories and categories of?
All of there are, are, if you break it down, there are hundreds of CPIs by the same source. And then they roll them up and do it kind of an average weighted. But there, in the general one, which is the one we're quoting right now, there are all sorts of categories of expense that seem to be neither relevant for a broader group of people, maybe of whom do not experience the kinds of increases in expenses that, let's say, the, our police officers do. And in their own lives, and or certainly in the administration of the district. And so I'm just suggesting that you have to be most closely focused on the kinds of expenses we need to accommodate.
I want to repeat what I said before.
I want to repeat what I said before, or said, and there are lots of folks here who are enjoying these numbers in a way that I greatly appreciate. I greatly appreciate the way the board is manifesting a degree of transparency and openness and availability of information so that the citizens can participate and make our wishes and our ideas available to you. Will there be a time a little later on to make a general comment about something that's very present in the room now that is not specifically at all about this topic that's being discussed? Will there be a time to make a general comment?
Yeah, we can be open to public discussion today if we accept.
Good evening, Chair. I'd like to just start with my comments, which I am looking back at what we just talked about, which is the budget. I believe it's safe to say that what we're looking at, at least in preliminary budget that we put on the table here, is a budget that is actually going to produce a revenue surplus. And I say that because even though it shows a $16,000 deficit, if you add back in what we know we're going to get, which is the cops grant, it's very likely to turn into a change if you're looking at a positive budget. Now, that's important in connection with what it is that we're talking about right now, which is Measure G. Measure G, just go back on a little bit on the history of this, and it was raised by Mr. Toons here, in fact, he was one of the authors and the favorer of that. It was brought to the voters back in 2010 with a statement contained in that voter application manual, that at the time that 2010 was on us, that it looked like we would be running a budget deficit of $364,000, and that therefore it was imperative that we agree to adopt this Measure G, not $200 per parcel. If you look at the measure closely as I did, and I don't know if our attorney or if you have a copy of that, all of the sections of that measure, you will see that in that measure that there are certain prerequisites that are required before this can be brought up for a vote. And two of those, and they're actually two in number. The first one is that the GM is to present to the board information as to the amount of funds collected and expended under this ordinance. And number two, that the status of any project required or authorized to be funded to carry out the purpose set forth in the ordinance. In other words, the general manager was supposed to have presented the numbers as to how much money had been expended to date on this, but probably more important, he was also to have brought forth information as to why this CPI increase should be applied in order to fund necessary costs associated with the police department, because remember, Measure G was police-related only. So that's why I started out my comments with the fact that we currently are showing a budget surplus. It would appear to me that we therefore have no particular needs to apply the CPI increase because, in point of fact, we don't, at least in this year's budget, need that money to support police-related activities. Remember, as was already established here by Mr. Herman, who spoke before me, there is no obligation on the part of the board to adopt the CPI increase in its entirety. In fact, you could adopt anything between zero up to that amount. Since, and then again, since we, I think I can try and establish here, since we do not have a pressing need for police-related services, and in fact, we have put into our budget a total of $78,000 of capital expenditure to actually enhance our department, I would submit to you that we actually have no reason here before the board to suggest that this CPI should be increased. And furthermore, I'm not too sure that the appropriate policy guidelines in the ordinance have been followed in that nothing has been presented by the GM to support either the expenditure funds or why this money is necessary.
Those are great points. Thank you.
Could we get some comment from our councilor then?
The ordinance does contemplate the, would be subject to a report filed by the general manager on those issues. I think I could redone verbally, just to say written. I don't know whether you're prepared to do that or not, before we begin this meeting. Alternatively, I just bet I could be continued until the next meeting, so that report could be filed in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Corona, and I also wanted to speak on this issue. I think the total increase per resident is $5.62 annually, which is a very tiny amount of money per person. And I think that heard even tonight, there are many expenses that people would like to see, just even tonight, you know, the community center building, the park itself, higher reserves and contingency on all fronts, granting opportunities, matching grant opportunities, and many other projects that have been mentioned as part of the general operation of the district, many of which also take money even if they're not an actual applicable entity. I think that when you look at the budget, unless I'm missing this, I know this is Measure G, which is only one funding source, when this was passed, it was passed because the community did not want to continually be cutting services during after year because they could not keep up with the expenses of affording the police staff in the current level, at the current level that they have. When you look at the budget for the police, there's actually a big giant chunk of discretionary funding from our county taxes. That funding, basically, this money would help offset the total police funding package to increase the Measure G by this small amount, and then that money could be actually taken from the discretionary funds that are used for the police department and moved into some of these, many other of these items that this community also wants to see. So I think it's a very small amount of money. I think it's prudent to have small increases rather than go back to taxpayers or another measure to help support the police department in the future. And I would strongly support a $5.02 increase to help the overall budget of the community. Thank you.
Sprint over here.
I'd like to second those comments. I think, most of you know, I've been showing up to find in these meeting meetings for a while now, and trying to beat on the budget, understand where there's some ground. And I don't think that increasing this small amount, I agree, is a relatively modest amount. And of course, the 2.4, your comment's really well taken, but it's a difference of about 90 cents to us, so it doesn't blow it up.
That's per year.
I understand.
But that is drastically affected by which CPI you mean.
But I warrant that taking an hour out of one of these meetings is worth 90 cents to all of us just in life, right? So I don't, I think we should just do it in a way that makes sense, and you may have proposed the way that makes sense. I think all of these budget issues, you can't figure in the air for a number. You have to pick a number based on some rationale that you can defend. I very, I support the idea of just come up with a legal budget number. I support the idea of an increase. We were just talking, the GM out a new car for the year that more than consumes this budget now. I happen to drive a going-on 13-year-old car, which I love dearly, and don't want a hard road, but she's very long, it takes 110 miles. But when my car breaks down, which it does, being German and old, it doesn't interfere with a 911 call. You know, it's of relatively little consequence to the community. When a police car breaks down, that may or may not be of great consequence to the community, especially if you're the one waiting for the police officer to show up. So we think of these things in very human, personal terms. Just understand, that's a car somebody has to rely on or do. That doesn't mean that there's magic in 100K, and those cars, those two cars do need to be replaced right now. I think it's good to look at that. But there should be no doubt that we have plenty of things for the police department that we're talking about not doing. Rochelle mentioned the security subcommittee that was thinking about different things we saw, and that Jane Hart should talk about. There's always this, well, we could do that, but let's be prudent and not do that. So I'd like us to look holistically at the budget and start actually saying, there are things that we should do, let's look at those right now, we're in very much a pullback, and let's not do things, and let's cross things off. I'd like to take a more holistic look at what we're doing, including this building, and ask where are we going to get money to do that. So I support the increases that we can make, because I think they will help us all.
I like the rule and say, but sure. But what I'm wishing for, with this relatively smaller item, and everything else, is an agreement with a holistic approach. I'm pushing for a rational and holistic approach on every single item. That's all, increase the professionalism of how the budget is made. So that should apply to every single item.
I'm sorry, I'd like to speak in favor of measures increased adjusted for the CPI. I'd like to respond particularly to what Mr. Watt said. In the event that we actually do show a surplus in the budget, which would be a great thing, this board can decide to put that surplus towards the reserve. I heard Rochelle earlier this evening say she was reached that the reserve is larger. I think having substantial reserve is just good public policy, and I think it would be to overlook this opportunity to get these extra funds, that either they are used because they need it, which we're not sure about, or if they're not needed, that they're then put to the reserves. And I think that alone is a good enough reason to pass this.
I want to say something about the principles involved. I don't care if the tax increase is 10 cents. It's putting the cart before the horse. It does not make any sense to me to pass a tax increase before it needed to be established for the budget. Let's not put the cart before the horse. If we do need it, okay, pass it. But that's not a step.
I do support the day's gap. I do support the increase. I think it's justified. As the discussion has demonstrated, there are a number of things that are being deferred, including the police stock, which I think, you know, 2,000 plus miles, more than should be replaced. One thing that we need to do, though, however, is be consistent in how we use the consumer purchasing. And I think you need to go back and see how much you used in the last few years. It doesn't make any sense to me to then change this year based on some different approach than you've used a consistent approach in previous years. So let's be consistent. How we use it now, how we use it in the past, and going forward.
So wait, I'm interested in that. Why, why do you think it's so important to be consistent?
Why?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Well, why, my response is, why wouldn't you be consistent? If you have a Consumer Price Index that you've used in the two previous years, and then you decide that you should change it, you better have a good justification. I've not heard that necessarily. And I think consistency is a good approach to things. And if there's some reason that you didn't want to change it, that's fine, but if you need to go back and look at what you did the last couple of years, see what you did, and if that's still a consistent way of doing it, and a reasonable way to do it, then I would stay with it. I mean, I have no reason to believe that the one that had been proposed, we've heard two, protection one, one with 2.4, the other was 2.0. One is based on urban, I guess, wages, I mean, but still, I mean, I don't know how that relates to what was done in the past. And I think we need to research that. And if the one that you've used in the past is broken, then stick with it.
I think it's very important to follow the procedure about having the income and expenses report as required by Proposition G. And I don't think that a verbal report tonight is satisfactory. I need to look at something and be able to think about it for at least one minute, maybe, maybe a few more minutes. Maybe some of you are good at one minute, but I'm not. And that is a reason enough to postpone it to the July meeting, and that would, that would overcome my objection that I think it should be done at a regular meeting and not a special meeting, this kind of surprise, we're going to do this also. I'm going to put in a support for using the urban, urban income level in, I know that 85% of our, of our budget is police salaries, so it seems to me that urban income...
Robert Wood's called urban wage earners.
Urban wage earners?
Yeah.
Is, is a very appropriate CPI use.
Maybe I forgot, how much lower than the, the one we're using for this is that urban wage earners?
Well, it varies year to year.
But right now, today...
Right now, it's...
Quarter three basis points.
It's approximately...
2.77?
It's 0.4 percent difference.
0.43.
0.4 percentage point.
That's quarter three basis points.
Yeah, so it's 2.4 versus 2.
So it would be about 11K, I think, a little less maybe.
Yeah. All right, more comments?
I'm sorry, can we have another one? You know, I'm glad you asked me, Pat, about my concern about voting on the proposed budget, because I, while I cited the, what I consider economical proposed budget for legal fees, I think in my presentation of items that concern me, I'm a little disappointed that there isn't more of an attempt at cost savings reflected in the proposed budget. And I have confidence that in the next iteration, we'll see more of that. If, you know, I've had constituents who listen, $5 a parcel is pittance. And so if I accept that, you know, 13,000 is just a pittance, then I'm wondering why we can't say $13,000, you know, on this budget? If $13,000 is so immaterial, you know, why don't we first attempt to find cost savings instead of directly going to the taxpayer and, you know, asking them to sort of cop it up? And I just feel genuinely uncomfortable with this, and I'll both know tonight. If you want to continue this, I can support that one, I think it's a great idea. But this is, to me, unnecessary, and I don't want the taxpayer to continue to shoulder the burden of our inability to balance a budget without resulting in a deficit. of our inability to balance a budget without resulting in a deficit.
Lynn, go ahead.
With all due respect to Vanessa, well, I've been attending the finance committee meetings for years versus just an interested resident in the last couple of years as staff. The people who serve on the finance committee, some of whom are present this evening, have worked so hard at reducing expenses. We are down to bare bone. There really is no more to pack. There is no pack in this budget. Director, two of these have served on the finance committee for a number of years. Mrs. Morrison has, and two others also has. And they really have done a generous duty. Even Carl Kruger has participated in making sure that the line items, other than, I know Carl doesn't agree with the legal line item.
I've been very successful, have I?
Yeah. He has been very successful.
I don't see it.
Anyway, I will assure you that.
Okay, well, let me stop you now, because I don't think it's actually fair to sort of convert my sentiment into an indictment of personal people.
Not at all. I think based on, I. I know I could provide you with the history. That is all I want to hear.
Well, we're going to agree to disagree on whether or not your stat is.
Any other forecomment?
I have a question. I'm sorry. No, no, Keith, I said Pat. So I am curious about two things. One, what is the history been on the requirement that there be a report? Have we done, and I realize I have two people who don't know. So we've never done anything other than a verbal report?
It's just standard form of the budget.
Okay. And then is there anything in the ordinance that would, in your opinion, Randy, and maybe this is asking too much on the fly here, that would require us to have some sort of formal report?
So what the ordinance says, it says that the general manager is, is required to report that information. It does not, and we can talk about what it may be. So there's nothing in the ordinance itself that says that the board may not vote on this matter until it gets that report. It may well be that, you know, what's contemplated by the ordinance is that you have that information either in the form of the budget, which you do have, I guess, as I said, or in some other form so that you have that information when you make your decision. But it's not written as a precondition. It does not say the board may not act until it has received and reviewed that report.
And what is supposed to be in the report? I just didn't hear it when you were there the last time.
So it says that it shall contain both of the following, the amount of funds collected and expended under the ordinance and the status of any project required or authorized to be funded to carry out on purpose is sent forth in this ordinance.
The amount collected went to be collected or in the past?
It says the amount of funds collected and expended under this ordinance. I assume that means probably for the last fiscal year, although it's not explicit.
So we have that and this, right? I mean, isn't that what the report tells us? How much has been collected per parcel in the past several years?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm concerned about that. I think that we failed to meet the obligations for reporting under Section 4. I mean, it says, the district general manager shall file a report with the board of directors no later than June 30th. I mean, filing a report implies that it must be a written document. That's what I think a report is, and expend it. And I have no blame on our sixteen day manager at all, because I will tell you, as a six month director, I was not, this was not in my wheelhouse or in my this month. So I think that because we failed to follow procedure, I'm very uncomfortable voting for it. It is a very incremental amount, and I, but this Measure G never sunsets. And you, and the compound interest, the wonder of mathematics, that thirteen thousand becomes, you know, two hundred thousand in approximately fifteen years. And Rob Furman will correct my numbers later after the meeting. But it's approximate. I promised that the general manager that we would shake the couch cushions to make sure that we would, we're finding all the money we could. But in this particular instance, this particular year, I'm really uncomfortable just because of the way this is worded. So nothing to do with, and no, no blame but my own, although Mr. Knight nearly convinced me that not putting it in reserves. That was a good argument, except we have to put earmark it as police expenses only. So.
Sounds helpful.
I actually think it is perfectly reasonable to pass this increase tonight. The question, to your point about putting money in reserve, the money Measure G uses goes right to the police. We can take money away from the general fund that's now going to the police and put to some other expense. And that's the whole point of this. We do have a deficit right now. We cannot count on COGS grants in our budget at all. We can't even discuss COGS grants being a reality. You just can't do that. Right now, we have a deficit.
They're like the lowerfold board.
Yes, exactly what you cannot discuss COGS grants in the fund at all. It's just, it's forbidden. I think we have enough knowledge about the status of the budget now to say that it's perfectly reasonable to pass the thirteen thousand dollar sum at two point four three percent cost of living index increase. We do need these funds. We need the general fund money's released to other expenses. I've heard people complain for the last year about how we shortchange other expenses because we put it all towards the police. Here's a chance to use the new authorized tax. It has a CPI increase built into it for just this reason. So we can free up general funds for other uses. We're talking about a fifty thousand dollar budget for this building and maybe a twenty-five thousand dollar budget for the annex. That money has to come from someplace. And it seems right now you have thirteen thousand dollars coming right out of the police budget and going right over there with Measure G substituting it in place. And if you want to put the freed up money into the reserves, you can do that. You aren't putting Measure G money in the reserves. You're putting money you no longer need to put to the police into the reserves. So the purpose of Measure G is to satisfy. We are in a deficit. And I think with the expenses I've heard tonight, we're going to go deeper into a deficit despite the best interests of everybody. I know enough from what I've heard tonight to know that this is a reasonable increase. It's a cost of living adjustment. It is not a new tax. It's built in an existing statute, and I'm in favor of it.
I may add one more thing, directors, and that is that the unknown, that we are in contract negotiations, and that's not part of the budget, because it's unknown at this point.
I understand. Just a quick comment. Is there any reason we couldn't just wait till the next meeting for Measure G? Just for the reason of community harmony? Does that mean, is there some reason we couldn't?
Well, it does say that the report has to be filed by, to us by June 30th. And so I don't know what that means. Vote has to be.
That means tomorrow.
That does mean tomorrow.
I'm making sure you all be filing my report tomorrow in the direction of the board. If the board wants to go that route, I can certainly make that happen being statutory compliance with the statute. If the board's decisions do that.
You have to do that, you have to comment.
No, I mean, I don't want to do something that's not correct legally. And with all due respect to Rochelle and the necessity, I think that it's not, they don't, they have a different understanding from our council. I think all we can do is rely on our council.
I think you questioned them again.
I'm sorry. Rochelle, I think said, I hope you agree. So I'm relying on what our council is telling us that we have complied. By the same token, I'm not sure that it makes sense to rush it through tonight if there is a question about whether it should be two point oh or two point four, if there's a question about whether we have to ever written a report. And that's what I'm struggling with. So that's my issue when I'm just talking. Which is why I like to do weird.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, you know, I think we don't lose anything by tailing it through tonight and taking up at the next meeting. You can file a report tomorrow. Yes, general manager, hard. We could be legally squeaky clean. We could say a little bit about the two point four versus two point zero.
And we don't even have to, you know, fulfill the full CPI percentage.
The report can have the report being put up on the website.
It will. Don't see why not.
I'm going to continue this either than when, until our next regular meeting.
Yeah, which is July ninth.
July ninth.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moving on, I have two hours. Pat's abstaining, you're.
I hope not.
Okay, so we have three ayes, one abstention, one no. About that, Lynn?
You know, you folks just asked a budget that has a certain Measure G number in it, and now you're saying you're not sure you want to have it?
Yeah.
Silly me. Yes, silly me.
They did.
I just want to make sure we, you know, legally, all right, across all our teeth. I'll tell you right now, I support the CPI increase. That police special assessment that was, Lynn, when was that put into place? Some years ago?
Chuck, was that?
Measure G?
No, not Measure G, though. The police, the police tax assessment.
Oh, the special tax? Oh, gosh, the history of the special tax goes back many, many years.
What was it put in place?
The first one was put in place in the early nineties. It was called oral. I would say it was the early nineties, late eighties, early nineties. And then there were subsequent increases. There was an increase when I was first on the board, so in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four, it was March of ninety-four. And then at that time, CPI escalators were not legal.
Right, that's what I wanted to get at. So that assessment is frozen.
It's frozen.
It does not rise to CPI. A very important point for people to understand. So the only thing we have to compensate for that is Measure G.
So, and I want to be clear as well. The only reason I'm abstaining is we've gotten in trouble before when we have taken a risk on whether we are or are not in compliance with requirements of law. I'm not willing to take that risk, I guess, right now. But I fully support the increase that's contemplated in the budget, either at, in the proposal, either at two point four or maybe I could be convinced that there's another number we should look at. But I fully support it. So my abstention has nothing to do with that. I'm just not willing to take that risk.
Well, then why don't you go to table with her in the next meeting?
Because I didn't know if that was right.
Oh, okay. Fair enough. That's honest. All right, so we're done with that issue. Next up is what's numbered, I have two. And this is an affirmation of Measure B, as I understand it. Randy, can I ask you to explain what we are bringing up?
Sure. So the California constitution requires a little agency set appropriation limit each year. In this case, I mean, most years it's set by the board for simple calculations. The last November, district voters approved Proposition B, which itself set the appropriation limit for the coming fiscal year at three million, seven hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that limit has already been set by the public for the coming fiscal year. If everyone of us contemplate adoption of a resolution by the board, so my advice, my recommendation is you go ahead and affirm that amount by way of resolution, just to ensure your compliance with that statute.
Just to be clear here, every fourth year, the public has to have a vote on the appropriations limit. Every other year, within the three years, the public relies on the board to pass the appropriations limit. The Measure B done in November of twenty fourteen was the fourth year. And we did it last year to save the cost of an election.
All right, any comment, Chris Paul? On the board? Do I have a motion?
I will quickly affirm the vote of the elected in the November election and execute the resolution tomorrow. I hope that's an appropriate motion.
I said.
I was just going to change to say, we'll adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash six.
That's my elegant check. We'll take checks version.
All right, that's the motion, then, Lynn. You got it?
Yes.
The board moves to adopt resolution twenty fifteen, action zero six.
Affirming.
Affirming.
Affirming the Roe v. Wade Act.
All right, and who seconded that?
I mean, Rochelle. I'll let you second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, passes. All right, Leonard, you asked for a general comment.
It's about this.
You need it with a microphone?
Yeah, it's about this recall business. First, I want to say that I have nothing to do with it. And no one I know has anything to do with it. And I think that it is divisive, and I'm opposed to it. I don't think we need this kind of divisiveness in the community in this time. I think what we need is healing. And this kind of thing doesn't promote that. Furthermore, if the board had been functioning the way it is now, whether I agree with what you guys do or not, whether I agree with any of the approach of any individual on the board, that's material. There is an open democratic process going on, and that's what counts. And if it didn't like this, I would never have been part of the debate.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you very much. I appreciate the comments. And I will say that it is disheartening to think that people would do a recall for any of the directors, whether it be the three of us or the five of us. It's expensive. I believe that it's divisive. And I hope that we will be able to move forward in the same spirit that we come to these meetings every week, or every month. Seems like every week recently involves our time. Everybody's got, I think, a commitment to the community. We have differences of opinions, but that should not be the basis for a recall. And I'd say that whether I was the target of it, which I am, or whether it was one of the directors. I just think this is a very poor way to plead out government in our community.
I have a comment. I think it had been done for recall when Thomas asked how I felt about the recall. I believe I copied him in the email. But I found, just like Reverend, a recall was the sacred tool of the electorate. And I still, when I think of what happened to Governor Davis, I thought that was profoundly unfair and a big waste of time. And he felt victim to that. And I never forgot using my Democratic governor because of sour grapes. We face challenges as a new board. I think we're trying to find our sea legs. As I mentioned, I wish you could see what happened this closed session, because I really, truly believe it's very productive, very cordial, efficient. And I owe a lot of that to Mr. Riddle. And I've seen great improvement in closed session. And so I, I think that's changing, and I think we have plenty of work to do. And it takes two to tango, and if we've been married, realize that, you know, it's just not Chuck's fault or just my fault. But sometimes passions run amok. And, you know, we care about the community. So it's not indictment on me or Anna or any of us. But, you know, I'm also not going to, I want advocate. I don't want to touch a recall with intent or pull, because it's not my place and it's inappropriate for me as a sitting director. But I, as I mentioned, six months ago, seven months ago, I think, you know, we really need to think hard about when we bring out these instruments of democracy and how we use them. But I won't caution right to do so. But, you know, my position on it hasn't changed, even though I'm deeply frustrated, as I was seven months ago. even though I'm equally frustrated as I was seven months ago. But I do believe it's getting better in closed session, and I hope that needs to what we do on the days.
Getting better in closed session, but not open session?
No, I want you to aspire to something, Lynn.
I hope we get a German. Thank you for your.